Good morning. This is Monday, March 22. This is the Persian County Board of Commissioners meeting, budget workshops. And this meeting is called order. Public input, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included in an agenda on as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Saying no public, we'll move into the first item, which is the seniors.
So that's multiple tab nine.
That grant money from the city didn't hit the books yet?
I haven't seen anything.
I thought I saw the check come through. It came through. You know, we sent them that letter and then they did send the check.
Is that from their care funds or something?
What's that?
The 3,000.
It's their city's contribution.
Every year?
Yes.
Yeah. So they're only doing 3,000?
That's all they give us.
Yeah. And see, that's where they really should be putting in more because most of the people are from the city.
We haven't received it yet, Larry, unless it's
Oh, really?
On Friday because it's not close to the GIA. I didn't think I had seen it. I know we requested it, but I haven't seen it.
I have to. Okay.
So you're thinking Karen, we need to pay more.
Is there any way of going back on? Well, I know there is on those hundred and some people and telling us how many are city and how many are county?
Yeah.
Okay. If you can do that, then we can get a percentage and we can look and see. And I know that they're not
It's definitely a big number.
Yeah, that there's more city than there is county.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That would be great. Thank you. I don't really see. Whoa. So, Rine, the deficit where it says for next year, 77,670, that's because you don't have all the grants in or no?
That's true. It takes it by margin.
Okay.
So I would even want that.
Okay.
It's just how a budget worksheet is configured.
You know, a lot of this year's numbers are down, of course, so
Sure.
But they're they're gonna come back.
Do you guys have grants applications for next year already?
Yes.
Done?
The, but one of them was just returned to them, I mean, maybe a month ago. Haven't had her, haven't heard back on that one yet.
Okay, when you do here, we probably owe me copies of it because these PC admin costs are all part of that line item. Brand application and that's whatever's on that application for next year should be what we have here.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
So
And I think
I think this is an estimate, but it becomes to be different.
Oh, and they looked fairly close.
Consistent.
Yeah, yeah. And then, of course, we have which we've talked about a little bit. I asked for funding to replace the walk-in freezer condenser unit.
Yeah.
Haven't heard back yet. And of course, and we talked about that too. What we're talking about a replacement of condenser unit that we have fixed all the time. And there may be some other funding if the state funding doesn't come through. The other thing that I have or didn't put on here in capital outlay, I don't know if it's capital, anyway. We have an issue going on with our printer scanner. And whatever reason, Justin knows about it. He's give us some things. I brought one that they make cleaner sheets to run through the printer to hopefully clean them up. What it does is at the bottom of each page, it wrinkles. And you can't send a document like that to the state. So I either have to come over to Rine's office. Last time I went over to Karen's office. And then last weekend I did it myself at my home. So we may end up having to buy a printer scanner.
But that won't be 3,000, so it'll be small equipment.
No, it's in that bottom one.
So do we need to put in small equipment?
Yeah, really. I think we should have it in there just because we don't know what's gonna happen. If we can't get it fixed, and the bad part is that isn't that old.
So what, a thousand? What?
I think that'd be a high number.
Well, I don't know. 500?
Probably around there.
Is that, have you had yours priced to replace yours?
500, okay. So in smaller equipment, we'll put 500. Case.
We make that small equipment under 009000 where there's no department because
Under which one?
It's not going to be for dining room or homebound or transportation, so it should be in the department 000.
Yeah, that's, that's
And we don't have anything there, so would you say 500?
Does the printer have, my printer has a thing where you can clean the printer net? But I don't know why if that's usually if it doesn't print right.
Well, you mean it's self-clean?
Yeah, but you've got a wrinkle in the paper when it comes out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not readable.
Yeah, sometimes you have to like pan.
Yeah.
Because they won't
It has the, it's a problem with the rollers or whatever.
Something. I even tried a single sheet just to see if it would do it.
Yeah.
We don't have, I mean, other than Justin, we don't have anybody else around here looking.
So as a matter of fact, I think it looks fine. So then we go to the gift fund, which is 93.
I want you guys, especially Crystal, to look at the salary schedule that's there.
Well, because I had, I had input changes.
Well, we kind of went off of what was last year, so
Right.
We have a vacant spot right now today at homebound driver, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then you have mental, that's half time now. And then you're gonna want a relief driver for 25 hours per month.
Yeah.
And then you have 180 hours in there for relief. But I think the mentally, that's
Yeah, she's kind of our
So you know, the differ, two would combine.
You know, I noticed I noticed that under the hourly rate, it says 9.75
Or
For the drivers.
Right.
Where it was at $9. And as I've talked to you about anyway. We have, we have people come in and ask what that position pays. You told them $9 and they said, thanks, but no thanks.
What is the minimum wage?
Eight seventy-five.
But is it gonna go up?
I think that's what Chris is telling me.
Okay, the nice and nice.
Yeah, I had put in the budget sheets. I had put in $10. And anyway.
So back to the scenario on the front page, you're only within $3,000 of being a violation of the 4%. So if you put that nice and applied up, that's going to reduce that to barely be compliant. And I already had to increase the Pilt revenue coming in by 30,000 to keep you well, actually more than that. This year, we're transferring 133,000 and by all your figures, I'd have to transfer 188,000 this year.
Wow. And that's one reason why the general fund is so low too.
Because the Pilt money can't be seen or set in the general fund. The norm is we've been doing 163,000 to the senior center, but last year there was a hefty home balance. And with the reduction of this of the services not being available because of COVID stuff, the 100 should be more than sufficient.
The only way you'd be able to raise like your halftime driver to 10 would be if you did away, or I'm not sure exactly. But the relief driver and then somebody else would have to pick up driving when you need a relief driver. I mean, it's, there's not enough money to do that. Jordan used to drive. And I think she used to cook too, so
She cooks all the time.
Okay, well, I'm just asking, but to drive, what do you need? Do you need a CBL or?
No.
Just, it's a regular?
It's just regular.
You don't have to be trained, but so
Okay.
Yeah, I was originally the vice director of garbage.
Yeah. So I mean, you need to make that decision whether you would want to do away with either the relief cook or the, well, a problem with the driver. Or half and half, you know, cut the hours down or something. And then you'd have to let me know. And I don't know exactly what it comes out to because I haven't done the math. Yeah, it says right down here, minimum wage increased July 1, 2021 to 975. I didn't look down there. And then what does the federal government want, 15 or something?
Oh, yeah, they want 15, but that's for federal, not state.
Yeah.
It's not 15 right away. It's here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't buy one now either. Yep. So are you okay with this one? You just let, let me know?
So we're done with that one. The gift fund is number 93.
So I know that auditors don't like to see a lot of money sitting in a fund like this. They don't expect it to go down to zero or nothing, but they like to see that it's being used, so what are your plans for using it?
We had no need to this last year.
When we have the advisory board meeting last week, the advisory board asked that once we start getting everybody back into the center to pretty much do either like a welcome back party or start doing all the holiday stuff again. And so that's my plan is as soon as we can get everybody back in to start using it for their parties and stuff.
Yeah.
So you, do you plan to do like the birdhouse raffle and all the other things that we look forward to?
There's still a one birdhouse there that Tommy made
Yeah.
The door house one.
That didn't get raffled off because that's when we closed.
Oh.
So it's still sitting there with some money in the account. Waiting to sell more tickets.
Okay. So after number to buy some tickets.
And this weekend, Crystal, I did find the bingo machine people and I sent them an email telling them that we have an issue and we'll see what they do.
Yeah.
This brand new bingo machine, which was actually paid by donated funds. It has two number 52s on it and no number 51. And then there's a 35 that
Yeah, the 35 and when you put the balls in its butt, it lights up a completely different number.
Yeah.
So it's kind of
Yeah. And it's brand, it's brand new.
They need to replace them.
And we all know our seniors love bingo and they have been on the adult
Oh, yeah.
They could. Believe me, that's, I know
They love their bingo. Anyway, I did send them an email yesterday and
Rine, if the condenser came out of here, where would it be? Under miscellaneous services and supplies or, or repair? Or I don't know where.
It depends on how much it is. If it's over the 3,000 or
Out of equipment. So right now you have nothing in equipment. And you have a carryover. So it wouldn't be a problem, at least to put some money in there to have authorization. Doesn't mean you have to spend it. It just means that the budget shows if something came up, you could spend it. And I mean, I would put some money in there.
Hmm.
I would put some money in there. So, I mean.
The replacement for the condenser unit is 10,600 and some dollars.
Okay.
But now you were talking about
The care.
And that would be our second choice.
Yeah, and I'll, I have to do some more checking on that, that's all. But do you want to put like 20,000 in there?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm, I'm just throwing Oh. We probably have to put in 11 or 20. Is there anything else that you need this year?
The stuff that's in capital outlay, but that's on the budget.
Yeah. So we could put we could put 11 in for this year. Yeah, and then for next year, gosh, if we put 10, that would still be okay, wouldn't it?
Yeah. See, it just makes it easier, Crystal, if we put it in the budget because it's supposed to be taxation. And that just means you have authorization to spend it. Doesn't mean you have to. But then we don't, at year end, don't have any issues with overspending. So your ending fund balance clearly has enough money in it to add those items. So we'll add 11,000 this year, 10,000 for next year.
Yeah. And you know, that way, you know, we'll see because our money's gonna be so short in our general fund too, that I don't know what's gonna come up. I don't have anything else to
Good job.
Is this, is this as clear as mud to you right now?
Yeah.
It'll get easier, believe me. It will.
Thank you.
But talked, talked to Commissioner Rackley about if you want to raise $10 an hour for your, your driver, your halftime person. And then you'd have to cut down the hour. Somebody would have to cover some of the other stuff more.
So are we gonna just keep like the one driver thing? You know, before we used to have two part-time drivers. And then one driver just went out of town. No one stayed in town. So are we still doing that? Are we just gonna keep the one driver that we have?
I think the one for now.
The one?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
And then when we get back more and more where we need that extra driver, then we have to look.
Yeah, okay. And then just keep all 100 as our kind of float person where
And if you could email Rine how many city people and how many county people?
Okay.
That would be awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Bye, have a good day.
You too. And we need to have breakfast next month.
I told the coach.
Hey, Dixie, how are you? Good, thanks.
Morning.
Good morning.
Come on.
So community center is 35 white. I put the numbers down so I can So Dixie, I'm looking at the heat. Um, looking in the right place. Last year, we spent $5,051,000 for heat.
5,100?
5,107 last year, but all you budgeted for this year is 3175 and then 3100 for next year. I'm thinking that needs to go up to 5,000 on each one.
For the heat and power?
Just heat. I'm just looking at the line item that says heat. And probably the power needs to. So the power, I'm sorry, I jumped from that one, but spent 4,000 last year on power. So it should probably be at least 4,000 for this year.
I agree with you, yes.
Yeah, and then next year, 42 is fine. I mean, water and sewer. Water and sewer, we spent 3380. So we probably should be at least 34 for this year and 30
Why don't you go up on the heat?
Oh, the heat, I'm sorry. The heat, I went to 5,000.
For both years?
For both years, yeah. I'm sorry, I was doing it too fast. And then power, I went 4,000 this year.
Right.
And then water and sewer, it's gotta be at least 3,400 this year and then 35 for next is fine. Do you phone? Looks like there's plenty of phone. Did our phone bills go up, Rine?
They did.
Okay.
After when they renewed the state contract, we got back on that contract, everybody's going up. And we don't really have control.
And for this year in office supplies, I, I realize it's your best guess, but we've spent 139 and you've got 240. And then 250 for next year. Well, I realize we'll have to spend some more money this year probably. Because we're probably using some of your supplies from the cooperative head side, you know, that you do.
Oh, no, no. No, everything that's taken out of there is from the community center. I have to buy another microphone. I have my cords.
Right. No, what I meant was just regular, just office, you know, like paper and stuff like that.
Oh, they, yes, we use the same paper.
Yeah, you're saying that, so. Repair and maintenance has to go up.
That's what I'm thinking. That looks low.
Yeah, it should be at least 1,200. I'm going the wrong way on this. Not helping the bottom line. Well, I'm thinking it's an increase. She's increased it to 240. I was thinking about just putting it back to 200. And then next year, leaving it at 200. On these payments. You increase.
Letter releasing.
Probably, is it the dishwasher? No.
It is the dishwasher. Our bill right now is cut in half. The client, our vendor has told us that he's only gonna charge us half right now.
Okay.
As soon as our business picks up, I'm sure it'll go back up, so.
Okay.
That's why we increased it.
Okay, but then for next year, you only put 2,000. What, do you think it'll go down?
It depends on the usage. I, I know.
Okay. Okay. In small equipment. What, what, what did you put 1,500 in for next year for small equipment? Do we need a computer and a printer?
Yes, that's, that's whenever the new offices form, we're gonna need those things, so, yeah.
And then
There's a printer over there. It looks just fine.
Okay, so it's computer and then is there a desk anywhere?
The desk that belongs to the community center is the desk that I use and you are welcome to have it.
So what will you use?
One of the old desks.
I'm sorry?
One of the old desks.
Oh, okay. So actually, we need to be putting in a computer for this year. And I'm sorry, Rine, I'm going the wrong way. Big time.
Are we gonna reduce the waste payment for this year?
I don't know what it, I'm thinking 2,000 should be enough, shouldn't it? Instead of 22?
There's nine months of activity in there for that 1540.
Okay. So mine
So right now, it's like 170 more than 25.
And so we have four three months to go. That's three more. Yeah. Yeah, actually, it should.
Both years or just this year? Just this year because she said that he reduced it due to.
I'm, I'm sure he will. He can start to take up the fall, so.
Aren't computers about five or six hundred dollars?
Yeah, we just replaced one at the senior center. It was about six hundred.
Six hundred. And when that, was that the monitor too?
Yes.
So it was a computer and the monitor?
Um, probably a scanner, desk sized scanner. They need.
Okay, those are only a hundred or less. So, so if we put in like maybe seven hundred dollars and then next year, I'm thinking we lower it down to maybe five hundred. I'm not even sure that we anything more that they need, but I don't know that.
That's all I think that's.
Yeah. But this doesn't help our bottom line at all. And nothing to do with you, just the general fund. The general fund is totally out of that. And then on salaries, the salary may change too. So that might help a little bit.
When a person is half time, doesn't that mean that their first is half time too?
It's, it's a percentage times whatever their salary is. So it's only half time in that it's what, whatever your salary is, the per percentage is taken against that and all the other percentages too.
Okay, so I was just wondering if that would change too.
We, all of that would change, the whole, the whole thing would change. But we'll have. Yeah, the only thing that doesn't change really is like group insurance, because whatever group insurance is, it's half of that amount, because it's not percentage. So we'll, the commissioners will have to figure out what they're looking at for salary. So, okay. Anything else?
That is totally it.
John. There's nothing in here right now. What, what are we looking at?
All about the grill and the stuff?
Yeah, because the hoods.
It's backwards.
I, I would guess that's expensive. So it's going to be a capital outlay. It's over three thousand, I'm sure. Can you find out soon? You need what, the phone number? Okay, so who do we?
It could be in the files.
Could, could you?
As ABC?
Well, he's thinking ABC, but he doesn't.
Aspire extinguisher service from Reno. Aspire extinguisher service from Reno. They come out and service it every six months and.
It's the same people who never, never installed it. Would that be the same? Is that what? It's a different place.
So Dixie, could you look in the file? Okay. Yeah, we'll have to put money in there for that. But everything else in the community center should be good, like the tables and are being restained and you got new chairs and.
The restaining hasn't started yet. I do not know why. We're slow. But they should be starting very quick. Um, the chairs are fine, tables are fine. Everything is just working great. Everything's basically new. The coffee maker, there's a cherry coffee maker that core donated. So there's, there's any microwaves. So we're knives. It's a lot of new used cans and bowls and everything in there. I think we should be good there.
Okay, great. Okay. Yeah, if you'd look up, if you can find it, that would be real helpful.
Okay.
All right. Yep. Thank you very much.
You all have a blessed day.
We are. We love budgets. Just like you love budgets.
All right, you guys have a good one.
Okay. You want to come up? We'll get, we'll get you out of the way. Get back to work. You're making. What happened?
Same fellow weekend. Hopefully I'm sure you catch me.
You caught her, but you got you.
Yeah, I took the, it was just the sudden stopping her weight, the way my leg was, it was kind of good to handle.
I'm glad you said something about the food. I forgot. Do you have any applicants for any?
I have one.
I talked to Frank about Bill. He said that Bill's in a, a care facility now. And he hasn't really come to. And they don't allow visitors.
Going to pay the union bill care taking more money.
The same salary twice in time, but they're also going to be taking care of the cemetery as well up there.
Several places in here where you. And you definitely need some different work trucks.
Yeah. That is in my bill.
James put in for a truck, so his older, his truck would be available.
Yeah.
Is that a two-wheeler driver or a four-wheeler?
I think it's a four-wheeler.
Yeah, because one of our trucks is a two-wheeler driver and that truck has a tendency to get stuck right up.
I, I'm pretty sure that's a four-wheeler.
So what, what were you going to raise? Jim Whittaker too?
Whittaker.
Whittaker, yeah. What would, what are you raising his?
Seventy-two.
Yeah, but I meant his monthly salary. Did you also put in there, don't you, for some supplies that he needs?
Well, that's not, that's not included in that. That's why my weed, my weed and stuff went up.
Okay, because when I divide that by twelve, I get six hundred a month. Yeah.
The gas.
Oh, yes.
And anything like that.
And that's because I think it was because he was going through a lot of gas this last year. And he's going to be doing weeds and going down to the cemetery when his ATV is spraying with the sprayer.
So right now he makes two fifty, right?
That's his wage.
Yeah, so what is his new wage going to be? Is what I'm asking.
I'm thinking four hundred.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure. Yeah, he's been two fifty forever.
Since I started here.
So calculator, well, that's forty-eight hundred. So that leaves three twenty twenty-four for his gas and everything else.
Because we had discussed it a couple of different times, Carol.
Well, and he is going to do the cemetery because nobody else can.
Or whomever, if, when he does retire at some point.
I think he's going to die in the job. But I don't mean it that way. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean that, that way.
So you're saying up four hundred?
He's, he's going to move him from two fifty to four hundred. I just wanted to know what the monthly salary was going to be because Reed needs to know that. And then the difference is for any supplies that he would get. So it'd be forty-eight hundred actually for his wage, but the difference is I think twenty-eight. I did that in my head, but for gas and, you know, there's times he has to do other things, so. And then we pay him water too. Where does that come out of? Does that come out of this too? No.
I don't know whether.
Does that come out of?
That's a reimbursement thing which is. He hasn't really been submitting.
Yeah, although I've noticed the, the gas.
He hasn't really been submitting anything.
For the water?
For the water.
When, when the water flow stops, there's this, I don't know, stream or whatever, when it stops and he uses water from his own well to water that Emily. The Union.
Because there's just that.
And it depends on the year. I mean, if it's really, really hot or whatever. He takes care of that park as if it's his own.
Oh, yeah.
And it's beautiful, you know, there's.
So the seventy-two hundred.
I would leave that for right now. So the uniform expense. You raised that. Why? It was twenty-two hundred this year. And you've got twenty-six.
Because our, our clothing is actually going up.
Okay.
And I, I kind of, I get these emails all the time through our supplier armor and I've noticed that our everything is going up.
Everything is.
It's ridiculous.
Groceries, fuel, everything. Transportation costs are going to skyrocket, skyrocket and then that.
There's only a bunch of it, three hundred and he's spent twelve hundred.
Because somebody up in either Grass Valley, I think it's who's using it, but they're, they're doing, they're, they're having a pesticide company come up and spray.
But they pay for that out of the fast.
I, I was, I just got a big force of pest control from Sierra Pest. Because I happen to use it. Because somebody sent me something like, I have vouchers from Sierra Pest that we had to pay. And I pretty certainly was one of them.
The only pest from I see, because they email Bonnie that and she gets the.
Sierra Pest is in Love Lock all the time.
But that's not Grass Valley uses.
No. Somebody out of, yeah, yeah. Sierra Pest doesn't go out there.
It's northern Nevada, somebody. So I don't want to do the Sierra Pest control.
Well, we can leave it at twelve.
Leave it at twelve for next year? And then weed control, you, when it really went up next year for to fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
That's because of the union bill and we're, I keep running short on some of the ball field stuff because I've been adding iron ice to our, the, the grass there and to here, which is allowing it to stay greener and using a little less water. It's, it's helping them with soils. And that was on a recommendation through a company that when we had the fields looked at over there, they said they would recommend doing that would help use a little less water to keep it greener. So I did that all that, we did that last year. It actually helped to finish out.
So this year, excuse me, this year you've only spent fifty-one dollars and you say you're going to spend ten thousand by the end of June.
Correct, because I normally don't buy my pests, my herbicides until March or April or after we get the bid from.
Right, right. But some of that you're going to be using into next year. So for next year, can't we put ten thousand again?
Yes.
Oh, medical first aid supply. You've got forty-five hundred both years and we haven't spent anything.
Just because they're, they're, the kits that we buy are usually typically around two years at a time before they expire. I haven't bought them. I'm going to have to buy them this year.
But you need to buy them.
I'm going to have to buy them this year.
This year you're going to buy them, but then you won't have to buy them next year, will you?
Hopefully not.
So.
But I don't know how much they're going to cost between that, you know, what the prices have been with that then recently.
So could we lower next year?
Yes.
To a thousand, two thousand? Tell me what.
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't you split it in half?
Well, just two thousand, I think is plenty. Fire, security. Okay, so do you have some annual bills coming up for fire and security?
Fire and security, that, that was also supposed to help include the alarm system stuff and also replacing of cameras or DVRs as needed. A lot of our cameras that have been put up in the, you know, out, especially the outside ones, have been here since two thousand fifteen. And consequently, they're starting to, the, the sun and the weather itself is, is starting to take a toll on some of it.
So are you going to spend twenty thousand before the end of June?
Um, I think of I've actually got a few places where I should. Um, on this building in particular, um, I've got a couple of cameras that face more towards the west. So when the afternoon suns are coming in, it is burning the lenses.
So how much is a camera about?
Well, they vary and, and again, the vendors, everything has kind of gone up. What it used to cost is five hundred thousand, it's now costing us at least seven, and that depends on, on what we're getting. When we first put this, this system together with, with very inexpensive equipment was, wasn't. very inexpensive equipment, was, wasn't the best quality of stuff. And if we spend just a little bit more, we get a lot better quality.
So can we lower this year back to twenty? That gives you fifteen thousand more to spend between now and June.
So from twenty-five to twenty?
Yeah, to twenty. And then next year, I'm thinking no more than thirty, if that. And you guys, I'm just throwing out numbers if you.
I'm going to give you an example. Okay, so Larry and I have had a conversation a couple of times. Well, I've had a conversation with him in regards to the airport cameras. Airport cameras been out there since two thousand and fifteen. We've got, we've had several different instances out there where cameras were great, it helped with a lot of things.
Was when a guy kicks in their door.
So that, that and, yeah.
Yeah.
So we've also got a new building, and we need to add cameras to the exterior of that, of that building, because we also have a propane tank out there. But I've got four cameras right now that the IR has been burned out, which is the infrared, gives you the night vision.
Yeah.
That at night, it's, it's like looking at black and white pixels. But in order to replace those cameras, I need to replace the DVR.
So what are we talking about? A rough figure, I mean.
About twenty-two grand, just to replace, add six cameras, replace four.
At the airport alone?
Yes.
Now you have twenty thousand in capital improvements for cameras, too.
But I, that's gone. And in fact, I went over.
No, no, for next year. I'm looking at next year, we put in twenty thousand.
Yes, the, the thing about technologies, even our TVs, our phones, after a few years, they're starting to go out. I'm trying to get the best deals I can with what we can. But where do we compromise with our, with the security of our parks or?
So the airport, why, I haven't looked at the airport budget. Why isn't the airport budget paid?
Well, that, that is, that is, I have that. I just didn't have these numbers because we were waiting for the prices to come out to put to the airport for the airport. That was just an example, I'll say.
Okay.
Which is as an example.
Well, let's lower.
Remember last year or the year before, when I had the DVR go out here, which was sixteen grand just on by itself.
Yeah.
No, I know.
And I have one that, I have one in there right now that is still of an old style, which is one of the originals. So if it goes out, we're going to have to have that buffer to go to replace that.
But if we lower next year to thirty, you've got twenty in for next year and capital improvements, that's fifty thousand. I mean, unfortunately.
Are you talking about twenty in this budget right here?
I'm talking about twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two. Yeah, and I'm looking at next year's number because he has, he has forty thousand, so I was saying lower it to thirty. Because between the two, that gives him fifty thousand for cameras and stuff.
And also remember, there's been a couple of cameras that were banned online from the outset.
If more revenue comes in, we can always look.
Sure, I understand that. I'm not arguing with you. I'm just giving you the justification of why my prices adjusted the way.
Yeah.
You don't want to be short either.
No, we don't, but at the same time, I'm hoping that we get some.
Because I just had to replace the senior section reporters, too.
Yeah. So this year twenty thousand, next year thirty thousand.
How about next year, thirty-five thousand?
For twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
And I, and I do understand the, the consequences of our, of our private money, but I also try to do things and try to make sure that.
No, you're doing a great job at fixing everything and keeping us on top of it all. Where are you going to find work trucks for three thousand dollars?
These? Well, I see, I talked to Mr. Hill.
I'm just, and I'm not picking, I'm just.
To find better trucks. But I also think that if we go to some of these auctions, we might be able to find, that's where, that's where all the vehicles that we have now came from. You know, they're retired NHP trucks. And I think that like an example, the transmission on my truck now slips really bad. To replace it is more than what the truck is actually valued at.
What are you going to, oh, what are you going to spend eleven thousand five hundred on this year in equipment?
Well, I have tools that are getting older, and I had a pump last year that was seventeen hundred dollars, I believe, that we were using to pump out the pool. It just blew off.
Oh, it did, really?
It's not just now, but it just blew up. And I also have pressure washers that just, the whole bottom end just blew a lot of it.
But if there are three thousand, we're going to have to go under stall and not cap it off.
So I guess I should go to small equipment. You think you're going to spend some?
Where we get it.
So between now and June thirtieth, you anticipate spending another two thousand dollars for small equipment?
It's possible.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm just asking.
I understand, and it's possible. And for the reason I increased that a little bit is because I have noticing more work that we're doing. There are some tools that we don't have, even though maybe the road department may have the tools, but they don't always have the people to let us use like a a small rig roller or something like that that we need to do.
So you have ten thousand in for next year. And then under equipment for this year, you've got eleven fifty, but you haven't spent anything. And equipment is anything over three thousand. So if you're thinking that it's going to be smaller tools like pressure washers and stuff like that.
Some of those smaller tools are like three thousand.
Are they? Okay, but are you going to spend, do you think eleven thousand five hundred of three thousand, or do you need to move more money into small equipment is what my question is?
I, I can't give you a definitive answer because I don't know when my stuff is going to break. And I, if, if they're in an ideal world, I should have to replace anything, but if it does, then what are we going to do?
Yeah, I mean, just like that, boom. That's not going to be, they're not cheap to replace. A one, oh, I see. A dump truck itself, a one-ton dump truck.
And then you've got under. It's just a guestman, I think, on his part.
Well, I don't know what's true on me. I know also one of the other items that I know that will be here the next year or two is a lawnmower.
Is that the zero turn one?
That's the, the Gravely. That's been here since before Frank.
That's a really, wow. And you use that a lot.
That gets used, yeah.
Well, my question, reading is, he's got trucks, dump trucks.
I'm going to have to.
Those will be vehicles, right?
Or they can go and resit.
Okay.
The auditor told us this year, it's our decision where we want to.
Okay.
It's just important that we get along fixed assets if it's open.
How much is the lawnmower that has been here forever? That's an expensive one.
Anywhere between seventy to twenty thousand dollars.
That's what he's got on the cap.
Yeah.
I mean, it's very unfortunate that the cost of everything is going up, but our budget is going down. And we can't, it's not something that we can afford to contract out or anything like that. But I'll adjust the power if you all need me.
And I know you won't spend anything that you don't need. You know, I know that you're real conscious of that.
Well, I try to be.
You are.
May not always look like it, but.
Thank you for sending me those quotes.
So the one one airport, that's one dash four two.
You should, you just got fuel two weeks ago.
I have not gotten that, really.
You what?
I have not received the bill.
But you don't know what it was yet. I know, it just like.
Well, you can figure roughly nine thousand gallons times four to a gallon. So it's going to be thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand. And we just filled that tank prior to that back in a hump. I certainly hope, I mean, it'd be great if we did.
It'd be great if we did because of more action going on, but at least then you have income.
I mean, we're not exactly losing money out there, but we're not gaining on anything either.
So what would a bill be? I know you haven't gotten it, but is it like forty thousand?
It's going to be between thirty-six to thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Also, if we put forty, that's sixty-two. So couldn't we lower this maybe to sixty-five thousand?
Because we cannot pull funds from here to put it out there.
We'll have to be careful on the fuel expense because I have the inventory changes too, so that affects. He does the inventory sticker, whatever, between thirtieth and then I have to make adjustments. And sometimes that can be up to eleven thousand dollars.
And weed control, you're going to go up to twenty-five hundred for this year, and you haven't spent anything yet.
Really good as work. Same thing, you're about ready to buy weed stuff.
Yeah.
What do you plan for repair maintenance to go up that much?
The garage.
Or the little white one?
Correct, to re-roof it and re- review the site again. And that was the lowest bid that I came across was that thirty-five there.
The.
And that's with the metal roof and stockpile.
Any idea what the roof on that one's going to cost on, for the metal roofing set?
Metal roof. Again, the reason being, now every, when this building was originally done, the codes were a heck of a lot different than the army. And they, they, everybody I've talked to, I've talked to Alpine, I've talked to anyhow, the people that did the community center at Inland, and also talked to renovations who's doing some of the other reports. You can't put tile roof on that, I mean, shingle roof, three tab or otherwise, because the lid is just too low. So that's why they all recommended the same thing of going to corrugated type metal. It'll, it'll allow water to shut off better than what, than what we get, but it has to be received no matter what.
Yeah, but any idea what it's going to cost to roof that building?
Just to roof it?
Yeah.
It was, it was in an actual, a complete cemental, somewhere in my office.
Five thousand?
Oh, no, it was, it was more than that. They do the whole thing, it's thirty-five.
Holy, that little garage? Whoa. Whoa.
So didn't we get Cares funding for the airport, like twenty-six thousand or something?
We had twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand? That's what's left of it? So is that, we got twenty total?
No, we spent some of that.
We did spend some.
We spent some of it to do the fuel maintenance on.
That three thousand something.
Yeah.
And that's the one that so far has not hit that. It, it was charged somewhere else.
Well, I, nineteen hundred is, well, there's eighteen ninety-nine charged here. And I still need backup to submit that for grant reimbursement for anything that is that. So we have not received all that twenty thousand because it's.
It's a reimbursement, yes.
So that's what she's saying, she's missing receipts and you ask for the reimbursement.
I tell you, get some receipts.
So where are the receipts? Who's got the receipts? I don't.
I don't know what they're for.
The three thousand and something for the.
Oh, from B and T.
It's what?
B and T for the fuel.
Yeah, but that was already submitted. That's been paid, but what, the question is, where was it paid from?
B and T is the vendor?
Yeah.
Because there's only eighteen ninety-nine that's been taken out of this care spray.
So where, what line is, oh, there, that one right there. Okay, I see.
You guys are looking at different stuff.
So my question is, what are we going to use the rest of the?
We, road department is going to tear down a building that should have been torn down twenty years ago. And, and it's not going to be twenty, it's going to be at least ten thousand.
What building is that?
It's, it's the old Beacon building, which is over by the old beacon.
Oh, I don't have a clue.
Is that the, it's at the.
Yeah.
There's a little concrete vault looking building.
Yeah, and Dan's looked at that, but that could come out of that funding. And then also at the same time, he's going to make like a truck turn around in front of the gate, that kind of thing. So he's, he's going to use three quarters of that.
Okay, this eighteen ninety-nine ninety-one is a B and T. And there's also one for seventeen forty-seven eighty-three. Is that what we're missing the backup on? I don't have copies of anything to submit for it.
Oh, either one of the B and Ts, okay. So that should be easy to get, shouldn't it?
Yeah.
During the waste.
Yes.
And then, so that's two.
Well, we must have already got some for the eighteen ninety-nine ninety-one.
Or you wouldn't have paid the bill.
I haven't, no, I have not requested a drawdown on that twenty thousand dollar at all.
Okay.
So basically, when I get back, I'll look at both of these B and Ts, you need what to check? I want to have this. Check in the invoice, the invoice.
So I'm sorry, Larry, how much do you think the road department is going to charge?
But it's going to be at least ten thousand.
So that would leave five, at least five. That hasn't, and does this have to be spent before the end of June thirtieth?
It does not.
Okay, so it can carry over.
That money is there for four years.
Okay. Because I was wondering if you could use some of it for that building or something.
Well, that's why I was asking how much for that.
For the roofing and stuff.
Yeah, we need to have a, a meeting out there with John and I and two members of the advisory board and figure out what's the right thing to spend maintenance wise.
And then our, I'm just curious, because when I was on the board, we talked about refurbishing that jet. Have you guys talked about the?
What's his name?
The pilot. Oh, the airplane.
Yeah.
Alby was supposed to come out with some people and do that.
Yeah.
Over years ago.
Yeah, and that never happened.
It never did.
And the Boy Scouts, I had checked with them at that point, and they said they could help.
The Boy Scouts?
Yes, but the Boy Scouts, this was a few years back, and then they kind of are doing stuff.
Yeah.
So I mean, it would be nice if we got a plaque that explained its history and then.
Well, Alby's the one that has all the creation.
Yeah, he does.
And then he had some kind of chemical or material that you scrub on it that would bring it back.
Yeah.
Alby did?
Yeah. Yeah, he's, he said, yeah.
Yeah.
But this has been.
It's been.
Four or five years. Four or five years.
It's gonna be nice just to get the tires aired up.
Well, I don't know if they even wonder at this time because they probably.
Put that goopy stuff in it. I don't know what it's called, slime. Probably way past slime, yeah.
So I might as well just lay this at one down. We're almost down to grant match.
Yeah.
In fact, I got an email from Armstrong this morning. The ten thousand dollar match that lazy has in there, which is great, that's the match for the design project that's going on right now. The, uh, the kicker here is right after, the next thing up in twenty twenty two, after the design, they're designing taxiways. That's a three million dollar project. And county match is two hundred thousand dollars. Boy, I don't see any gasping.
She gasped.
Yeah. So, huh? I don't, I have some, some, some ideas, but. You ready? So the ten thousand dollar, this is from Chris. The ten thousand dollar match for this year will not be required since all the FAA grants this year were a hundred percent, they paid for a hundred percent or are going to pay.
Money in there because we have to pay for some things before we.
Yeah. But what he goes on to say is, and what I was really worried about was the two hundred thousand. And he says regarding that, uh. He doesn't anticipate the grant being issued very early in the year. Most likely it will be mid to late summer, that's summer of twenty two.
Twenty one or twenty two.
He's gonna be done with that, so what do you think, Lacy? Is that twenty one? But here's what he says.
Awarded the current grant, so it can't be like.
He goes on to say, we probably won't need much local grant money until July of twenty two.
And I'm sorry, what is the project that we have to come up?
Taxiways.
The taxi.
Yes. It's a three million dollar.
That wasn't too much.
We're awarded the grant, but we have to match it with two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Maybe.
We have to, they always have a man.
The money before we get the grant or after?
No, after.
So we're looking at twenty two, twenty three budget.
Yes, we are.
But we still naturally need that.
But we're still gonna have to put it in there, yeah.
Yeah. And it's a little hard to put it in there when you don't have it. But it doesn't look very promising.
Why?
So I have a, an idea. Is, since nobody hears from right back. We have a hundred thousand dollars in this for right patch for the building. We talked last week about not doing that again. We're gonna put it off. So that hundred thousand dollars stays there. If we end up needing it for grant money, there's some money. I don't know if you can do that or not, but.
So I'm, I'm sorry, we need two hundred thousand for twenty two, twenty three. So we don't need to put anything in for twenty one, twenty two, do we?
I would leave something in there because we never know when a one.
No, but I meant, we don't need the two hundred thousand dollars. Are you, okay.
But I, I agree with Lacy, we need to leave that twenty million.
Yeah, no, I was, I'm okay with the twenty, I'm just asking about the two hundred or one hundred or whatever.
When's the lighting supposed to take place? The new lighting?
They don't. They don't include it as far as word, but you'll have new lighting in the twenty twenty two project.
So when you did the hanger agreement, what were you looking at as far as rent for the hangers or however the agreement was? Cause I haven't.
Not very much. You mean the two that are there?
Yeah.
Five hundred here.
Okay, and then is Keith Odl's plane still there?
Are those planes still in it?
No, Keith Odl, his plane.
His plane is still out on the ramp. I talked about that with Hugh Montrose not very long ago. Apparently he has a, a son, Hugh doesn't know him. And what he does with that plane, we don't know.
Well, they need to move it or something.
It's not, it's movable if you tear it apart, yeah. That's it. Why does it have to be removed?
Well, I, eventually you can't just leave it there forever.
It's been stored there.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but I mean, at some point.
At some point, but it's not a money generator.
No, and I, but it's, it is at some point, I mean, we, I mean, what happens ten years down the road, the plane's still gonna be there? I mean, no, it needs to be.
I think, you know, we just lost Keith a couple of months ago, so his son apparently is gonna do something with that plane, but I.
Yeah.
Don't have the particular.
Yeah, I'm just saying it shouldn't be there for a long time.
Yeah.
Like, well, the MiG was donated and it was, it's a Russian MiG from World War Two.
Yeah.
More history.
Yeah, but it needs to be, um, pick the stuff a little bit, and like a plaque or something that explains.
Well, it's out in the open, there's nothing covered.
Both of them are. Now, well, Keith's plane is, uh, there's somewhat of a cover on the inside to keep the inside better, but it's not perfect.
Maybe a son, son will donate it, we can sell it. I'm just throwing.
Yeah.
I mean, even if we got a couple thousand, five thousand or anything, this is bad because this comes out of the general fund. A two hundred thousand guy.
I knew that would get you.
The real side.
The west side.
The, the taxiways, that could just at the far.
On the south, that's what they're designing now. And then that'll be followed by the taxiway to the north.
Doesn't.
But that's not a three million dollar.
Doesn't the state have a grant program? And I can't remember the guy's name that I used to talk to.
Kurt.
Yeah, it sounds about right. So don't they have a grant program or something where they have?
They have one that comes out every year. They have one that comes out every year, but most of their grant funding goes to McCarran and, and Rena.
Or, or Reed or whatever it's gonna be called.
I hope not.
We've gotten a little bit the last two years, I believe, but it just goes back to that, you know, it's all.
Yeah.
It's not two hundred thousand.
No, it's not.
No. And I, I misspoke, the North Taxiway twenty twenty five. And that's, uh, two point four million.
Say they're damn near the same money.
Yeah.
Well, we might not be able to do it, period. You know, that's.
You can't throw away three million dollar project, you gotta find the money somewhere. I already, I already gave you half.
So, um.
You gotta find money for a lot of portion of this year.
Yeah. Holy cow.
I just wanted, I mean, that's not today, but it's.
No, thank you for warning us. Okay, now Judge Stevens was here and then she left.
She's trying to, I think I told you.
Yeah.
She said she.
Anything else for me?
No, thank you, John, you're doing a great job, thank you. I wish we had unlimited funds, but we don't. I knew I should have got, brought a Dr. Pepper with me. Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, and somebody has to load them, you know, that's the other thing, somebody has to keep the inventory in the machines. Okay, great. So. We could do a ride patch for.
The health, which is one dash three two, it's a small one and most of it is.
It's just.
Which, which one you say, Ree?
One dash three two. That has a lot of the unfunded mandates.
Oh, great.
That we have no control over.
So the Child Protective Service, Health Inspection, those are amounts that come straight.
Now normally we pay the health officer. My brain isn't working. Fifty, yeah, that's what I was coming up with, but I thought, is that right? Um, fifty dollars a month. And then we've been paying her extra out of that, yeah.
What's, what else in the, the remittance to outside government? The forty thousand? The what?
The health nurse, we pay a portion of her salary and.
Oh, forty thousand.
For the actual nurse that we pay to the state.
Yeah, and the problem with this is the state health department is so screwed up. They've lost their grants that was paying for a big portion of this. And so now they've.
So now they'll have to be after us to pay more.
Yeah.
Well, we've always paid about the same amount, but we get less and less coverage.
Yeah, but there was one year that we didn't hardly, it wasn't very much at all because they had some really good grants to cover. But because they didn't administer them properly, they lost them. But yeah, it's. If you look at the activity, it was quite a few years ago.
Lacy, that doesn't make spot. I couldn't find anything either, so I just used to say without. Usually those things, well, they're always kind of late on something of that. I guess I should go back.
She's coming every Wednesday, unless they pull her off, which they've done that, but it's pretty much. So we're looking at number thirty two. We're looking at.
That was close, John. Using it on you.
Yeah, it's got one of those shoplifting tags to it.
The other one we could look at is one dash twenty five, which is the juvenile area in the general fund, and it is mainly state.
So on this one now. These are all unfunded mandates. The only thing that's in here is Cheryl's salary, which is twenty four hours a week. And then there's really no increases, it's just very little, but the big part is those. We were talking about raising the China Springs. In the legislature.
What I got in the final revenue numbers the other day, it's gonna be eleven thousand eight thirteen for next year. So I'll need to change that from over to twelve to seven.
Eleven thousand eight. Number twenty five, did you find? Number twenty five. Um, this is what they bill us for China Springs, is that what it is? And we have a tax rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the legislature was talking about raising that, so the, the tax rate.
They're gonna give us the, oh, the tax rate?
They were talking about, I don't know if it's gonna happen, but there's a bill out there.
Yeah, but if we're already, we have no wiggle word. How do we raise the taxes? According to the final revenues, it's point zero zero three six. Last year it was point zero zero three five.
Okay, so just that.
So, you know, it's just that one.
So that revenue comes in and then it just goes back out.
Yeah, just to end it. So the restitution expense, what is that exactly? That's for if they have restitution case in the juvenile, they'll make that. I guess, I don't know how it actually works, but if they, like, one year they, somebody did something to the clock tower. So they charge that juvenile and that juvenile had to pay for it, so then it comes in as a revenue and a general funding expense. So we, in and out. We aren't charging juveniles restitution?
No, we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like.
And then we pay whoever, they're not paying the person. Yeah. Oh, but this is just a. This is offset by what they give us. Okay. We have to have a revenue earn at six points to pay out to do that. And then the other three items that have the issue, and those are all state unfunded mandates that.
So do we send any young people to China Springs?
I don't think so.
This just supports it for the whole state.
Yeah.
We have, we are, we have big.
We have the Churchill agreement.
Churchill and Alco.
And we paid three hundred dollars.
On top of the, the China Springs support, which we don't use.
Correct. It's a state unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
Well, it's not unfunded, it's funded by tax rate.
Well, so yes, but.
We still have to pay, but we don't even get a benefit.
But we don't use them.
Don't we sometimes play them in football or basketball?
If we were to use it, it'd have to be.
Oh, okay.
If we were to use it, did it have to be a kid that was really?
Yeah, it's a long-term facility and we, we've never had anybody that.
Yeah.
Needed to, not like overnight juvenile.
No.
It's jail or prison.
Yeah, it's big time stuff. Yeah, it's big time stuff.
So do we wanna do Rye Patch?
She's supposed to be coming.
Oh, is she?
Yeah, she asked me, and I, October ten thirty.
I saw her over the weekend somewhere.
I haven't heard since she booked the, the appointment, if she's coming, if she's supposed to, I thought.
And I don't remember where I saw her, but I said hi. So, ten thirty? Well, should we look at law enforcement before he gets her or something?
If you want to.
Well, I don't know what everybody wants.
I honestly can't see that he ordered.
Yeah, I haven't.
And like I said, I received it at nine thirty Saturday night. Cause I was just.
So can you tell who's on there? On Jim?